I'm calling the meeting to order of the February 18th Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. And I would identify that all of the planning commissioners are present, at least that's what it looks like to me. Is there anybody missing?
No.
And since we're, you know, meeting by Zoom for the public, we are authorized to do so by the Governor of California because of the pandemic and conditions that we're all facing. So we are conducting this electronically. There is an opportunity for anyone to participate, certainly by listening or tuning in. Go to the webpage for the City of Calabasas and the instructions on getting in are there. So I will acknowledge that all of the commissioners are present and will not do the roll call unless someone wants to do that officially. Hearing that, then we'll move on. I would like to ask our new commission member, Daniel Millstein, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and store a flag.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you. And when you have to do it like that, you have to pay attention, don't you? It's a good thing what we're saying. Is there any need to add or change the agenda in any way, staff members?
We have no changes.
Okay, then, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard, was that Wendy that made the motion?
Yes.
Great. And hearing no objection, we'll proceed on this agenda. Are there any announcements or introductions to be made, either from the commissioners or from staff?
Not here.
Nope.
Okay. I would just announce that, you know, it's confusing about anybody who's 65 or a frontline worker as to where you can get a vaccine. But keep paying attention because, you know, things are changing literally day to day. This, this morning, Brenda Johnson, who was the pharmacist at Gelson's, spoke to the Future Foundation and talked about the details and the problems of the distribution of the vaccines and the complications of having to make sure that we have, there's enough to reserve for those who got their first shots. I'm one of them, and my wife also got a first shot, got her second one day before yesterday and had a little reaction yesterday, which we thought was a little worrisome, but I can tell you that the pharmacist, you know, Brenda was telling us that that's pretty typical, and that is that proves that it's working. You might actually just have to sit the next day out after your shot and recognize that you're gonna not feel well, but that means it's working. So I'm going for my next one on Wednesday next, and we'll see what happens. She got the Pfizer vaccine. I got the Moderna. They're both the mRNA science or technology, so, and both highly effective from what we've been able to tell, and that's what Brenda confirmed this morning. It's a good thing. So as soon as you can get in, whatever it takes, or if there's an extra supply somewhere, they don't waste it. They actually give it out. So keep an eye peeled. There are places in Calabasas and in the region where you can get the shots. If you're at Kaiser, you can get them in Willland Hills or Porter Ranch. If you're just dealing with what's available. My wife went up to Cal State Northridge, and it was never leave the car, you know, a shooting gallery setup, they run you through half an hour. You get the shot, wait for 15 minutes, make sure that you don't pass out, and then they send you home. So that's more than you want to probably know, but it helps to actually understand and appreciate what's going on in that world. And I'm just strongly encourage you all to get the shots as soon as you can. All right, let's get on with business. Oral communications and public comment for anything, any citizens in Calabasas or actually anywhere. We want to address the Commission on Matters that are not on the agenda. Now's the time to speak. We will not be able to comment on that, but I'll ask our host if there's anybody that's waiting to speak.
Michael, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Good evening. There is one person with their hand raised. I also noticed that there's someone that called in on the phone, so if you would like to also see, please, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Let's take the first speaker with the hand raised, if you would, Michael, please, and let's hear what the citizen has to say.
Yes, we have Joanne Suvara, so I will allow Joanne to talk when you're ready. Please unmute yourself.
And if you'd give us your name and city of residence, we don't need a dress or anything else, but for the record, it helps us identify the folks who talk.
On the other half of the Joanne Suvara family, this is John Suvara. Live in Calabasas for 45 plus years, near Lupin Hill School. Anyhow, the reason I'm commenting is that the West Villages scheduled to come up, and I sent in a letter to the Planning Commission regarding the, the signs. In particular, I noted the signs that were put up for the last Planning Commission meeting by the city were not that good, and I had pictures, so I hope you all got that correspondence that I said in, sent in. And, you know, we even, because we were so disappointed in the signs, one of our people went out and had a banner printed, and you can see the contrast in that banner in terms of the, the quality of being able to see it legibly and from a distance compared to the signs that were put up by the city. So I guess that was also of concern to some people from the city that participated in the groundbreaking at the, for the Rondale Oasis Hotel, because the resident who owned that van, she parked it in front of the mobile station, and the code enforcement officer showed up within a short time after the groundbreaking ceremony to tell her that she was violating city code. And she pointed out where she wasn't violating city code, and she, she was able to keep this, keep this, the bayonet. Anyhow, what we would like is if the city could put up some good, good quality signs that are easy for the public to see as to when the date is and where the meeting is, you know, and I know that will only happen once the meeting is firmed up, and we're hoping that we might hear something about that tonight. And we appreciate your consideration of that and perhaps even discussing it at one of your meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John, for your comments, and let me suggest that you, if you have a photograph of the alternate sign that was volunteered, take, or send that picture to the Planning Department so that we can make sure that is included with your correspondence and also might be helpful in giving some guidance on what the best thing next to do is.
I'm sorry, the alternate sign?
No, I'm saying it could be that a photograph of the alternate sign that you mentioned, one of the, one of our citizens put up. Send that picture.
That's in the correspondence that I sent in.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
Sign on a truck.
Yes, thank you Chair Washburn. Planning staff has that correspondence from Mr. Suvara, and it is under evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Michael, you have a person on the phone that would wish to speak under public comment?
Nope, there are no other hands raised.
No phone call?
Nope.
Okay. Then if there isn't anything else, then we'll move on to our new business, which is the reorganization of our Planning Commission. And I would ask either our Director of Planning and Development or our City Attorney to describe the process that we're about to go through.
Happy to do so, Chair and Commissioners. So, as we know, tonight is the eagerly awaited reorganization. The Planning Commission is governed in part by the city's code, and Section 228030 governs the chair. And in short, so I'll read it for those members of the public who may not be familiar with it. The provides as follows. The commission shall elect a chair and a vice chair from among its members each for a term of one year at its first regular meeting of each year. No person shall serve more than two successive terms in either office. The chair or in the absence of the chair, the vice chair shall preside over the meetings of the commission. So what that means would be the recommendation is that take nominations first for a new chair, and then second have the new chair take nominations for the vice chair. And the process under Robert's rules is it's a nomination, does not require a second, although seconds are of course a way, lawful way to show support, and there are no secret ballots. So it does require, of course, recorded votes of the commission as to this election. And with that, I would say Chair Washburn, open the floor for nominations. And anyone can nominate themselves, or someone can nominate someone else as desired.
Thank you very much, Matt. Before I actually open the nominations, I want to thank the Commissioners and everybody involved in the city for allowing me to be on this Planning Commission and serving as your chair. And some folks have asked why I was actually serving a little longer than normal, and that's because we did synchronize our elections with the presidential election, which obviously had a significant effect on us in Calabasas and the nation. But that did, you know, confound things in a way, and it allowed me to serve a little longer because my second term in succession was extended in order to deal with the changing or synchronization of our election. So it's been my pleasure to serve as the chairperson, and I would recommend it to anyone who is on the commission, and anyone who's in the town of Calabasas wants to be on the Planning Commission, this is a great place to serve. I can tell you that. It allows you to do some important things and take care of your people, your family, and your community in a way that is rare. So I thank you again for that. But I will now open nominations for Chairman for the next one-year term for the position as Chair of the Planning Commission of Calabasas.
Before Dennis, before you open the nominations, Matt, is it appropriate if we make any preliminary comments that are not nominations?
Yes, those would be in order as maybe, as maybe desired.
Okay, so if I might just make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to very much thank Commissioner and Chairman Washburn for doing an excellent, excellent job over the past, I think, probably two years. And, and in absentia, also thank Peter Kraut, who also did a great job as Vice Chair. Really terrific. Having been Chair, I know Bob was Chair, and I suspect he's been watching these over the last couple of years, I suspect, would concur with me. My comment is this. I think it's been our practice to sort of suggest if one was interested in either position, rather than decline after nominated. I don't think that's necessary, but I think that's been sort of a tradition. It is also the case that obviously there are people who could not, I don't think Dennis could be nominated for Chairman, having just served two years. I don't know, I don't know whether he could be Vice Chair, but that's another issue. And then it has also been a tradition that people who have, who are qualified and want to be but haven't served can make that known if they're so interested. So I would, I just wanted to make those comments, having been here a while. I would also make the comment that, that if and to the extent anyone was thinking of nominating me for Chair, I would respectfully decline. I'm not interested in doing that, having done it for a couple of different sessions. So rather, I don't know that anybody would have nominated me, but if you were, I'm not, I would respectfully ask you not to do that. That's all I wanted to say preliminarily.
Could I make a comment about Dennis? Because Dennis, I did want to compliment you again. I think you've done an incredible job of chairing the commission, and I think we're all indebted to you for your service, and I don't know how you did it, but you've managed to adapt to these Zoom meetings with aplomb, and that's, that's not been easy. I think that Wendy was going to be the next Vice Chair, if I'm correct, and which means that she would have been, you know, the net, she would have been the next Vice Chair, but he's not here. So Wendy, are you interested in being the Chair?
I would, I would entertain. I would entertain that, yes. And before, before, before we move any, any further, I also want to thank Dennis, and I think it's been, if it hasn't been three years, it's been done an amazing job, and I really appreciate the way that you have conducted the meetings and the, the amazing insight and knowledge about this city of ours and its history that you have shared and, and contributed to. So thank you. Very much appreciate it. And back to, back to whether I would be willing to serve, I would.
Then, then, I mean, I would like to serve as Vice Chair, but I don't know if it's not, it's not appropriate, I guess now, but then I would nominate, you know, Wendy to serve as Chair.
And I would, I would happily second that.
Which isn't necessary, but it's wonderful that you would, and I think it's great.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Chair. Then I will close the nominations and ask for confirmation of our new Chairperson nominated by Michael and seconded by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? You have our unanimous support, Wendy, and thank you very much, and thanks, thanks for stepping up, and I think your mediation skills and your experience will be one of the best things that we have going for us on the Planning Commission, so it's heavy here.
One could, one can only hope. Thank you. I appreciate.
If you would like, I mean, I could continue and accept the nomination for Vice Chair, or you could, in fact, take over at this point and run the meeting and continue and finish up. What would you like to do?
I, either way, I just, I have to get over, I have to get over the feeling of being gypped that I don't get to change chairs.
Well, I'll tell you what, get a second chair in the, in your den and just move.
Maybe we could change squares.
Oh, there we go.
Well, that will happen anyway, and that's, that's a good thing.
I'll have to get over that. Um, I, as you wish, Dennis. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, to take over and accept, accept the nomination or a volunteer to sit as Vice Chair.
Then I will be happy to turn it over to you, and I will, I will change chairs. So.
Thank you, Dennis.
Why don't you run the meeting?
All right. Well, Michael has indicated that he would be willing to sit as Vice Chair. Is there anyone else who would like to throw their hat in the ring?
I will second Michael's nomination.
Okay, um, and in, in the interest of, of having, of having some variety and, and, and perhaps choice and, and no, no disrespect, Michael, I had actually, before he, before he stopped me in my tracks, I was actually going to nominate John as Chair. Um, so I feel that I kind of have to follow through a little bit and at least nominate him as Vice Chair.
Well, in the spirit of competition, I'll throw my hat in the ring for Vice Chair, but I'm very happy that Michael has been nominated.
Okay, I, so we have, we have two nominees, and not hearing any additional nominees, let's, let's take a vote. Now, what's, what is the best way for us to do this, since there are two nominees? Perhaps a roll call vote?
Yeah, I would recommend a roll call vote, given the two nominees. The vote could be simply Commissioner Mueller or Commissioner Harrison, as each person's choice, staff will note it, and the clerk will call the vote. And that would, that would, that would work for the, for the choice.
All right. I, I have already indicated, obviously, my vote. Commissioner Mueller. Commissioner Leah.
Michael Harrison.
Right. Commissioner Harrison.
Myself.
All right. Commissioner Washburn.
I'll vote for, you know, Commissioner Harrison.
All right. And then Commissioner Mueller.
I'll vote for Commissioner Harrison.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, then we have a vote of four to one, and Commissioner Harrison, Vice Chair Harrison.
Yes.
aboard as Vice Chair.
Thanks very much. Thank you all.
All right. That being handled, let us move on to item number two on our agenda, which is file number CUP 2020-001. It is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the sale and off-site consumption of beer and wine via a type 20 liquor license from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for the existing gas station locating it, located at 24115 Calabasas Road within the commercial retail zoning district and various overlay zones. The project is exempt from environmental review in accordance with Section 15061 and Section 15301 of California SEQA Guidelines. Who is going to be presenting on this?
Myself, Jaclyn Rackardby, Assistant Planner. Good evening, everyone. I will, if we're ready to go ahead, I can start sharing my screen. Bring up the PowerPoint we have today.
Please do.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I'd like to start out by mentioning that this project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. It was also posted on the city's website and at all required locations, and staff did not receive any public correspondence in regards to the project. So as mentioned, this is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the sale and off-site consumption of beer and wine via a type 20 liquor license from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for the existing gas station and convenience store located at 24115 Calabasas Road. We have an aerial map of our subject site. You can see it's right here, located at the northwestern corner of the intersection of Parkway, Calabasas, and Calabasas Road. The subject site is located when the, within the commercial retail zoning district. It's also located within the scenic corridor overlay zone due to the proximity to the 101 freeway, and is also located within the commercial auto retailer CAR overlay zone. To the east of the subject site, we have right here an existing gas station. This gas station also has a type 20 liquor license issued from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, which I'll describe in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. To the south of the subject site, we have existing property zoned public facilities. This is the LA County Fire Station. And then this property, which is owned CR and RM, this is a multifamily building or a mixed-use multifamily building to the southwest, southeast. And then to the west, we have this existing auto dealership and additional auto uses further along down Calabasas Road to the west. To the north, we have the 101 freeway. This is the site. It's comprised of a service station along Calabasas Road as well as a convenience store and auto spa. Project is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for off-site consumption of beer and wine. And the Calabasas Municipal Code, Section 17.62.060, requires that all conditional use permits, all conditional use permit requests are reviewed by the Planning Commission. Here we have a photograph of the site. This is as viewed from Calabasas Road. I do want to mention that this photograph was taken from Google Street View, so it's outdated by a few months. The only difference should be that these gas pumps, which are 76 in the photo, are shell, currently, and the owner can confirm that that's, change has already happened. And here we have the existing convenience store in the rear of the photo right here. Can see this building is comprised of the car wash facility and food mart right here, and it's within this food mart right here that the alcohol sales will be taking place. Here we have the proposed site plan. There are no proposed changes to the exterior, to the exterior or the subject site on the outside of the building for the proposed alcohol sales. The service station is located right here, closest to Calabasas Road on the southern parcel, which is APN 2069007041. And we also have the second parcel. To the north, it's APN 2069007908. This is the parcel where the convenience store itself is located. I do want to mention, because some of you might be familiar, this parcel, the northern one where the convenience store is located, was part of a land sale. It was previously owned by the City of Calabasas, and use of the site was leased by the applicant. And in February of 2020, the City Council adopted a resolution approving the sale of this piece of property from the City of Calabasas to the applicant, Amerian Family Trust. So that land sale was just recently finalized on February 3rd, 2021. So again, just to clarify, this parcel is no longer owned by the City of Calabasas, and the applicant is applying for this conditional use permit on a piece of property that they do own. Here we have the proposed floor plan. See, the only proposed change to the site, the addition of these two alcohol display areas just to the left of these front doors. The total square footage of the sales floor is 1,450 square feet, and the two alcohol display areas make up a total square footage of 100 square feet. Per the Calabasas Municipal Code, for a convenience store that is part of a service station, the maximum amount of the sales floor that can be devoted to alcohol display is 25%. With the proposed alcohol display area, it makes up about 7% of the sales floor, so it is below that code requirement. The existing store is in operation for 24 hours a day, but the sale of alcohol will be limited to the hours that are allowable per state law, and currently, state law prohibits the sale of alcohol between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. There are two proposed display areas for alcohol, which make up a total of 7% of the sales floor, which again is below that code limit of 25%. And there are no proposed changes to the exterior of the building to accommodate for the sale of alcohol. The only proposed change will be to the interior for those two display areas. Here we have a table of off-sale liquor licenses that are issued in Calabasas. There are two different types of off-sale liquor license, a type 20 and a type 21. So the distinction between the two being that a type 20 liquor license is for beer and wine, sale and off-site consumption of beer and wine. A type 21 is for beer, wine, and spirits. So the distinction being that type 21 includes spirits, whereas type 20 is just beer and wine. And I do want to point out right here that this address, 24025 Calabasas Road, is that gas station directly east of the site that I had mentioned at the beginning. So that site does currently have a type 20 liquor license, as do several of the other gas stations in the city. I wanted to mention that I noticed this address right here. You'll notice by the address on Ventura Boulevard is actually just north of the city limits. That one was inadvertently picked up in the search because of the Calabasas postal code. So that one is not located within city limits, but we do have a total of five gas stations slash convenience stores within the City of Calabasas that have a type 20 liquor license. And that is out of a total of seven gas station slash convenience store facilities in total in the facility, in the city. So five of those seven gas station slash convenience stores in Calabasas already have a type 20 liquor license. And with this proposed project, it would make a sixth. Moving on to the findings for a conditional use permit, the proposed use is conditionally permitted within the subject zoning district and complies with all of the applicable provisions of this development code. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan or master plan. Here I do want to mention that, as mentioned previously, this property is within the scenic corridor overlay zone and CAR, Commercial Auto Retail. Commercial Auto Retailer overlay zone. Both of those specific plans, the guidelines for those are more geared towards new development or exterior changes at existing developments. Not necessarily for interior changes or ancillary uses in conjunction with a primary use that's already allowed. So those particular specific plans are not applicable for this scope of work. And moving on to the next finding, the approval of the conditional use permit for the proposed use is in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Lastly, the location and operating characteristics of the proposed use are compatible with the existing and anticipated future land uses in the vicinity. And with that, staff concludes that the proposed project will not alter the existing convenience store slash gas station use of the subject site, which is an allowed use in the CR zoning district. The project is exempt from CEQA review. And the proposed project meets all required findings for a conditional use permit. So with that, staff recommends that the commission adopt Resolution Number 2021-708, approving file number CUP-2020-001. Thank you. I am available for questions. And I can toggle between slides if we want to go back and look at anything, consult the plans if we want to bring those up and look at those.
Okay, thank you, Jaclyn. Do we have, before I open the public hearing, do we have any questions or comments by Commissioners? No? All right. Oh, Michael, yes.
No, the only comment I have is something I asked for on the previous two improvements in, next to the freeway, and that is there's a a limit on construction time from, to 5:00 PM, you know, Monday, Monday through Saturday. And I would suggest, maybe the Commissioners will go along with me and, and change that to just Monday through Saturday. I mean, this, this store is 24 hours and maybe they can just do it in the middle of the night. And it's next to the freeway. I just don't know if any, if anybody's going to care.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, there is no construction contemplated in conjunction with this application. Is that correct?
Yes, I think the applicant might have actually wanted to touch on that point too, and how those conditions are moved entirely. These are all of our standard project conditions, make sure all of our bases are covered, but I do believe the applicant wanted to bring up the possibility of just getting anything pertaining to construction removed entirely, but I'll, I'll let them talk about that a little bit more if they'd like to.
Yeah, why don't we address that after we've heard from the applicant?
Okay.
Okay. So who is, who is who is acting as host here? And, and Michael, is that you in terms of allowing speakers?
Yes, good evening, Chair. I am looking in the, in the audience and I do see one hand raised by Dustin Wimmer, who is the applicant or the property owner's representative. I don't see other, any other hands. So again, if you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the zoom function. And if you've called in and you would like to speak on this item, please hit star nine in order to raise your hand. Otherwise, right now, there's only Dustin with his hand up.
All right, well, I will technically open the public hearing and I, why don't you go ahead and unmute him and allow him to speak.
All right, and would you like to just set a three-minute, a typical three-minute time limit?
We can, we can do that and kind of play it by ear since there's only one speaker and is the applicant. Let's set three minutes and see how it goes.
All right, I will do that. Dustin Wimmer, I'm going to allow you to talk so you can go ahead and unmute and begin talking.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, new Chair Fosberg, Commissioners. I'll try to stay within three minutes. I hope this will go quick, but yeah, my name is Dustin Wimmer and I work with Diamond West. And our address is at 24005 Ventura Boulevard, Suite 100 in Calabasas. Here tonight, representing the Amerian family, the owners of the Shell station, and it is been formally converted from 76 to Shell a little while ago. I think Jaclyn did a great job kind of going through all the details, so I don't have much to add as far as the project scope. I did want to reiterate, yeah, that there is no new construction proposed. And so I had mentioned to Jaclyn, we're not necessarily concerned about those conditions, as long as it's not going to cause this an issue in the future, but just want, as long as it's clear on the record that we're not proposing any new construction as part of the CUP. So any conditions that were mentioning construction are probably not relevant. They can be edited or, or quite honestly, if they're not relevant, it's potentially okay to just remain the same. Couple of things, I just want to reiterate, as, as I think Jaclyn mentioned. I think all but one existing gas station in this particular gas station already have type 20 licenses. It's extremely typical. Quite honestly, when the family reached out to me and say, asked if I would assist with them to get through the CUP process, I was very surprised they didn't already have one anyway. Because it's just something you're just used to seeing in gas stations. Beyond that, I think I'm just available for questions. Also Bob Amerian, who's one of the Amerian families also here, if there's a particular question that I couldn't answer related to the, an operation of the facility.
Thank you, Mr. Wimmer. Before I close the public hearing, do any of the Commissioners have any questions of Mr. Wimmer?
I do.
Yes, Commissioner Mueller.
Yes, Mr. Wimmer. So you're suggesting that we strike condition nine regarding construction activities in its entirety?
Yeah, it's not relevant. We're not proposing any construction, so.
I understand, but just so you're, you and your client understand that, that should things change, as they sometimes do, and there's some construction that would be proposed, you'd have to come back and get some sort of amendment to this. If you leave this in, at least if anything happens, you'd have the right to construct during the hours set forth in condition nine. So I, I, I understand that, I understand your point. I'm not quite clear why nine would hurt you to leave it in, since you're not going to construct anyway, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I think nine in particular is not as much of a concern. I think there was a, I'm trying to get the resolution in front of me. Sure. There was a particular condition that said something to the effect that the project, being this being the CUP, would have to be built in compliance with the 2019 Building Code was an example and that was somewhat concerning. We, we're not proposing any construction. We don't want to try to retrofit our building to some sort of, you know, the building was built in 2003. So there was just a couple of conditions.
Condition number six.
We just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to cause us to do anything related to construction.
Yeah, Jaclyn, what's the condition?
Number six. That's the one he's referring to.
If I could jump in here on this one, Chair and Commissioners, the state building code already require, A, applies regardless of whether it's cited in an edition or not. And B, it applies only to the extent of a building permit is being pulled for proposed building changes. So if the project proceeds as proposed, there would be no building permit pulled and therefore no, the building code wouldn't apply, because there's no construction. If the project is modified to involve construction, then we would be looking at applying the relevant provisions of the building code to the portion that's being constructed, not under the building code, which preserves existing buildings with certain limitations, not as to the past. So my recommendation would be to leave condition number six in place because of that, both that, those two realities. One, it applies anyway under law and two, as Commissioner Mueller noted, if the project were to become construction, that would be in place. Thank you.
If I, if I may, I'd like to add that point certainly is important for that particular condition, but to return to the other one about hours. As if, if and when they would have to get any building permits, really, building and safety would set some construction error limits so that they could be sure that anything that's going on can be inspected at times that inspectors are available. So that's going to apply anyway. So again, I think we, we'd have them coming and going on the construction hours, one or one way or the other. And I mean, just to point out a possible way this could be modified is they point out where these displays would be, suppose they decide they want to reconstruct or to make different cabinets there, that are there now with different electrical, that could very well require permits. So I suggest they be left as is.
And Mr. Wimmer, you had, you had indicated that they don't really apply, but doesn't make a tremendous amount of difference to you and your point. Is that correct?
I guess what I want to make was important is that we're not retrofitting any existing construction. One could read that some of those, some of those conditions as having to, you know, potentially affect the existing facility. And that's really the only concern we have. As long as it's on the record that it doesn't affect the existing facility and it's only related to new construction. I think we're fine.
Oh, I see.
And I, I, I think that that potentially applies more to number six than anything else. But if I understood what Matt said, it would only apply. This, this does not apply to existing facilities. It would only apply if there were something additional added. Marine, yes.
And, and I would add that the retrofit concern for an existing structure kicks in when you have 50% more demolition. So if they're planning to tear down half their building to put in 100 square feet, then yes, we would ask for a full upgrade to the current code, but for a small addition like this, assuming, even though it sounds like it won't happen, that you're just putting in new set of cabinets, plugging that all in, hooking it up, that would, that would be a routine permit over the counter and would not trigger any retrofit. So I would, you could certainly leave the statement in there, but it's, I think, standard language. That's really covered under the issuance of the building permit if that was to occur.
All right. Do we have any other questions of Mr. Wimmer? All right, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion?
I move approval of Resolution 2021 dash, looks like 708. I don't have my glasses on, but I think that's what it is.
As is?
708, yeah.
Yeah, as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then this resolution will pass 5-0. And we'll move on to item number three. Item number three is an ordinance to revise CMC Section 17.22.020 relating to the affordable housing requirements. And basically requiring making, making the revisions to comply with what has already come into effect as of January as mandatory from, from the state level. It establishes and is to comply with the provisions of AB 2345, which establishes more stringent density bonus parameters for local government reviews. The proposed updates to the city's density bonus ordinance is required by California law. Furthermore, if the city would not amend its density bonus provisions to comport with California law, the state law will preempt. Therefore, the proposal is exempt from environmental review in accordance with CEQA Section 21084. Now, if I understand this correctly, we are being asked to review this and make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will make the correct? Yep, okay. Who's presenting on this?
I am, Madam Chair. So hopefully I'll be able to get a shared screen and I'll go through the presentation. It should be pretty brief.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if everybody can see my screen. Do I get an affirmative from somebody? Is it shared?
No.
Not yet, Tom.
Not yet.
Let me see if I'm the one that has to do that. Where? So if I go back to the share, here we go. Now I've got it.
Yep.
I guess it was up to me. I thought Michael Klein had the power to control everything and everybody. Apparently not.
I do not.
Okay. So this is, as Chair Fosberg said, is some revisions to the density bonus ordinance, aspects of our affordable housing provisions of the code in 1722. And this is required to comply with some, a new law enacted by the state. Density bonuses are required. I am going to, by the way, I'm going to give a very brief sort of overview of what Danny's density bonuses entail. For a couple of reasons, the first of which is we've got a new Commissioner and I thought this might help him understand some of the background. And then we, of course, do have members of the public and it might assist them as well as understand what this is about. So density bonuses are required under California law. That is Government Code 65915, where you can find that. And every city and county is required to grant additional density to a residential development project when that project includes a minimum percentage of affordable housing units. The affordable housing units, by the way, would have to be made affordable for a term minimum of five, of 55 years. And there are different categories that would have to be obtained to get a density bonus at just different levels. So the bonus is in addition to whatever a maximum allowable density is specified at the local jurisdiction in their general plan and zoning ordinances. And which, if those two are in conflict, it's whichever is the higher density. Usually, and what's supposed to happen is they're not in conflict, because they're supposed to be in agreement, but the state law is written to make that clear that if they're not, if they're not in agreement, the higher density document prevails. New housing units, which could be accomplished by any density bonus, cannot count towards the jurisdiction's regional housing needs allocation. So I want to make sure I cover that upfront. We are going through the housing element update. Regional housing needs allocation is fundamental component of that. And we've made that statement a couple of times as we've gone through the different presentations for that effort. But I wanted to use this opportunity to remind everybody that that's a situation you don't get by complying with this law to count any units created toward your reign. Within the established parameters, a housing developer has the discretion as to whether a density bonus will be sought for his or her project. And that developer establishes the amount of the density bonus within those parameters again, as well as the applicable concessions and or incentives. So for example, for a given project, a developer would come in, for example, and say, I'm intending to, to develop this number of units, but I want to apply for a density bonus. And that's because I'm going to provide And that's because I'm going to provide ten percent units affordable to low income. And therefore they would qualify for a certain density bonus under the state statute and by our corresponding local ordinance. Those and that bonus, those extra units. We can't presume would it be accomplished? We can't anticipate future density bonus and add those up for. Units that would count towards arena to bring up again that last point, but the developer. Makes the call. They come in and they tell us which density bonus they're going to pursue for which affordable housing. They also would tell us which required concessions. Or or incentives if we had incentives available. They're going to ask for to accomplish the density bonus that they're asking for. So the local unit government cannot dictate either of those things. We have to be on the receiving end and then we evaluate the project inclusive of all of that. As long as this falling within those statutory parameters, we must accommodate the density bonus as part of the project. We can't approve the project, not approve the density bonus, for example. Only when. We would. By some incentive measure we've created or or under our own zoning ordinances. Or with a special project and and perhaps a development agreement or something of that sort where we're working out something goes above and beyond. What the state requires under the their law, can we have some manner of discretion for that additional? Effort. But that doesn't mean we can subtract what the state requires us to comply with. Now, all of this is intended to accomplish affordable housing as well and do it based on incentives, obviously, for. More density, more market rate units. And the gist there is that you can. Assist the private developers and be able to make projects economical. That they can provide the affordable housing, which is basically. Housing. And make their projects still feasible economically. In our evaluation as a local government of a proposal that includes a request for a density bonus, we are limited under the state laws to how much. Oh. Well, this is some of the fundamentals of density.
Hang on, hang on for a second, Tom. You froze, so I don't know. The past fifteen seconds or so, I don't believe we got it. Whatever you said.
Am I connected again now?
You are.
Okay. What I was talking about was that third bullet. So. Obviously, a the whole point of the density bonus is to assist the development community, which is accomplished basically by the private sector. To build a. Provide the affordable housing as an incorporated component of a feasible development project. If it's not economically feasible, then of course they can't get these done. So. There'll be a there'll be economic justifications for the concessions that would be asked for to accomplish the requested density bonuses. Under the state law, local jurisdictions are restricted to an extent of how much documentation and proof we can request. For that in in regard to the economic. Benefits that would be realized to make a project pencil, as they say. Inclusive of the affordable housing under the density bonus. So there are limits. We cannot require a full on pro forma, for example. Okay, so again, now this, I believe summarizes some of my just basic overview of the key provisions of density bonus. Under state law and what cities and counties must do. Cannot exempt ourselves from this. We have to do it and we have to incorporate the same provisions in our local ordinances. So. The reason we're before you this evening is there was a new long passed in the latter part of last year. Assembly Bill two, three, four, five that. Requires an update because it made some changes to that state law. We have been in compliance throughout. The various years where density bonus has been part of the state law and as they've modified it before, we've updated ordinance. This new legislation does modify a few provisions. It's it also preamps and its preemption took effect January one, so it's actually already in effect. We have, if we had an application that came in. Today, we would have to apply these these rules already due to the preemptive state law. So we're going to bring our ordinance to align. At a minimum, so there's no confusion, but we are required on the state law stipulates that we're supposed to do so. So. Under our current regulations, the density bonus shall be granted for residential development, providing a specified percentage of affordable housing units. The. Minimum numbers, five percent. That's for providing. Five percent of moderate income and it goes up to twenty percent for a project that. I'm sorry, five percent very low income if they're twenty percent if they're providing moderate income. So depending on what your income category of the of the affordable housing, the percentage of your units is going to vary. The applicable density bonus then is determined within that whole range on a sliding scale and it. Changes for each percentage and that is specified within the state law. Our ordinance, basically by reference, points to that sliding scale. We did not replicate it within ordinance. The number of required, I mean, minimum zoning concessions and or incentives that we must grant is also established on the basis of the. Proposed new affordable housing. The more affordable housing, basically, the more concessions we have to grant. In addition. Required off-street parking. Cannot exceed maximums that are specifically identified within the state law. So we cannot require additional off-street parking beyond what is indicated in that. We also have to grant density bonus for a variety of some other project types, not just affordable. But a project that would provide for all senior housing, for example, or housing for special needs, parts of our population. The density bonus also applies to those. Our ordinance points to that basically by reference in the state law as well. So under AB two, three, four, five, what changed? Well, the minimum required density bonus and the minimum number of concessions and or incentives have been increased. And the maximum number of off-street parking spaces, that is the restriction of how many we can require. That's been reduced or increased depending on which way you phrase it. That means been the the rules have tightened is what it gets down to. This is a summary and I'm replicating a couple of the tables included in the written report here. This is the summary of the increased requirements for density bonus. And the concessions incentives, this is not meant to be all inclusive of how it works, but it basically in a summary fashion covers everything. You can see what's in red and with the adjoining strikeouts. These are the addition or modifications under EB two, three, four, five. So, for example. The somebody providing fifteen percent very low income units. Can get a fifty percent density bonus now, whereas last previously, if they were doing that, they were, I believe, still under this category. So they now are eligible for an increased density bonus. And then if they're going to provide. Basically eighty to a hundred percent. They have an additional concession they can. Ask for that we as a local, you know, government would be required. To provide for. And then low income. The percentage of portable units. The this category, which was twenty percent, now has been dropped to seventeen to qualify for these. This bonus and and two concessions and the thirty percent. A percentage. So these threshold, this has been reduced also to be able to achieve a. A fifty percent density bonus in this case and the three concessions. And then lastly, looking at modern income. A project providing forty four percent. Of the the project for modern income would be eligible for a fifty percent density bonus. So the red. Areas here show key key components of the state law. And again, because our ordinance makes reference to those sliding scales, they won't. Specifically include, for example, this table, but I wanted to give everybody an understanding of the changes we're talking about. This shows the off-street parking. So in addition, as I said before, required concessions. So you saw on that previous table, depending on which category a project would fall into, there were anywhere from one to four concessions. This would be in addition to that. So a project conceivably. Could. You know, be eligible, obviously, for this because this is mandatory. We have to apply this one plus for other concessions. That would be the maximum. So you can see here that for a. Three to bedroom, three, two to three bedrooms project. That is within the density bonus category for those for those units, you cannot require more than one and a half parking spaces. And then for four more bedroom. Units, you cannot require more than two. And then this rental project with these. Parameters and within a half mile of a major transit stop may not. Be required to provide more than. Half a parking space per unit. And then these two. Hundred percent affordable for low income and within a half mile. Or for individuals sixty two and over. With para-transit. Or bus routes within a half mile, those which were half a parking space per unit have been dropped to zero. Then they've added modern income for sale projects with at least forty percent affordable units and within a half mile of a transit stop now has. A half of half of the parking space. Requirement maximum per unit. So these are, we cannot exceed these. It doesn't matter what's in our code in terms of meeting parking standards, for example, for multifamily. If they're doing the affordable projects under density bonus, we have to comply with these.
Um, can you explain what a major transit stop might be in Calabasas?
There's a very specific definition of major transit stop. It's in the attachment that I gave as as part of exhibit C. I'd have to go look for that, but. It has to do with the regular service. I believe it has to be minimum hourly. Has to be something that is providing that service at least Monday through Friday. It may require some weekend. I can't remember exactly. We don't have, like, for example, we do provide the shuttle, which provides service. Pretty regularly throughout much of the city. And when you put the half mile distance. On top of the shuttle mount. You end up encompassing a pretty big territory of the city that. Yet that would be considered a major transit stop. That would cover a lot of the city, but the shuttle doesn't qualify. It's not regular enough over enough of the hours of the day and days of the week.
Let me just let me just add something at this point, and this is an area for clarification, and I would appreciate your help on that, but. There there's two MTA lines that come through our community, line one sixty one and one sixty nine. LA DOT has a line four twenty three, but that's not considered a major transit stop in our community. There have been movements trying to eliminate the circuit that. Line one sixty one takes going through. Basically downtown Calabasas, you know, goes on Park Granada off of Park or Calabasas Road. Goes in front of Cody and then makes a right on Parkway, Calabasas and goes to the freeway at that point and goes to Agora Hills. I don't think they actually pull off at Los Virginas and stop, although that may change. But there's big changes going on at MTA and it might be really worth our while to understand from Robert Yalda, perhaps. What the implications are for using that major transit stop moniker. Like you're using in Warner Center with the Canoga Park. MTA station, that is a major transit stop. But we don't have anything like that in Calabasas. I just wanted that that might be. Used as a bonus incentive in some instances. We'll have to see.
Well, we can double check it. The only. Areas that I believe have the potential to meet that are the park and ride locations.
Let me jump in, which is one real quick comment on that one as well. So the relevant definition of major transit stop. But under government section six, five. Nine, one, five, as citing Public Resources Code section two, one, oh, six, four, point, three. Major transit stop is three elements. One, light rail station. Or bus rapid transit station of which there's none in the city. Two, ferry stop of which there's obviously none in the city. And then three is this intersection of two or more bus routes with fifteen minute or or less frequency during both morning and afternoon peak commute periods. And I'm not sure that we have any bus routes that have that level of frequency. So we may not have any major transit stops in the city at this time, although, of course, staff can confirm that with public works. Thank you.
That's why I said that the only areas that have the potential. To fall in that category, as I see it, would be those park and ride locations. That's those are near the freeway. That's where. You could potentially have the intersecting routes. That's where you'd have routes that would have some. Frequency, but the frequency that was just summarized by City Attorney Summers is far more frequent than what's available to Calabasas. Transit riders. So I don't anticipate that the ones that are shown here would be applicable to Calabasas, but we still have to provide for that. Okay? So we have a draft ordinance that is attached to the staff report. Draft ordinance number twenty twenty one dash three nine two and includes findings as required for an amendment of our development code and includes a determination of the CEQA exemption. And it updates the chapter as I've described to align with the density bonus update. Accomplished under AB two, three, four, five. And the commission's resolution before you. Number two, zero, two, one, dash, seven, oh, seven includes those same findings as well as the CEQA exemption. And it is to recommend city council approval of that draft ordinance. The planning commission, of course, for any amendment to the development code must conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council. Before such an ordinance would go to the council. So that's why we're here. I hope I've summarized this matter adequately and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Tom. Before I open the public hearing, does anyone have any questions of Tom? Commissioner Leah.
I do. Tom, would you please clarify in the report you used the term new housing project or new housing projects? Does that mean any project for which a permit has not been issued?
No, that would, I mean. When you say a permit.
Well, what do you mean by new then? Let me flip it the other way. When you say new housing projects.
If somebody's proposing a new housing development. Not not where somebody has already gotten their entitlement. And they're just pulling building permits. Right? If we have, for example, the. The Raznick project that has already been before the planning commission and council and has already been approved for development. And that already exercised that developer already exercised their rights under the density bonus provisions that were in effect at that time. Okay, um, so this does not now apply in lieu of what was accomplished through that process. That's already done. They are subject to building code review now for construction of that project. If that developer would elect to shelve that project and start anew, these provisions would apply.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
That answer your question?
Yes, it does.
What if there's an existing development? That has been around for for a period of time and there is. Perhaps excess land and they're looking to. They're looking to add on. they're looking to add on to their, and add on to their property now. Technically, that would be a new project, although it is an existing property. I, where would that fall in this analysis?
Well, I think I, I'm going to interpret a little bit from your question. First of all, yes, it would be a new project. They would be posing new housing. That aspect of it would certainly be eligible for density bonus. The units that would already exist would not be used in a calculation of density bonus. Um, I do want to point out, however, that suppose in your hypothetical example that some of the existing units already were affordable. In that case, there would be another aspect of state law that would trigger, that would, we'd have to adhere to and make the developer adhere to it, which is to make sure that any of those units that for whatever reason would be removed as part of the project would have to be replaced.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions? All right. Thank you, Tom. That was a
You're welcome.
Very clear, clear presentation of, of
Now, if I can figure out.
Mandatory, a very mandatory situation. All right. Let's open the public hearing. Do we have anyone? Michael, do we have anyone looking to speak?
Apparently, there are no hands raised.
All right, then I am going to close the public hearing. I, we have, I'm sorry.
A hand raised, or I did. Yeah, it's there.
Now a hand is
Norman and Mark sit and raise their hands.
And I am going to reopen the public hearing. I, and Michael, can you invite them to unmute?
Yes. All right, Norman and Mark, you can unmute yourself and begin talking.
Thank you very much. I, I'm Norma Citron and I'm a longtime Calabasas resident. I'm interested in this as it applies to West Village, which I think was what was being discussed. Um, if West Village were allowed to say resubmit their plan for more density. And I know this became a law as of January first, twenty twenty-one. Would they then retroactively be able to increase their density and increase their, I forget what you call it, their bonuses? Um, and the bonuses that they would want probably would be height. Uh-oh, I see a hand from Matthew.
No, Ms. Citron, continue your comment. My handle was to preempt any further comments from the commission, but please continue your comments and let that not wreck against your time.
Thank you. No problem. I just wanted to say that I, I was curious if that would involve a retroactive plan uh, or placement of a new plan by someone who's already been in SEQA and is looking for approval. And would a developer then be able to ask for, under AB two, three, four, five, would they then be able to have better density and perhaps uh, not have to go to SEQA for additional additions, additional additions, what am I saying? For including additional bonus. I'm not very good at this, but those are my questions. Thank you very much.
And I'll jump in here. Thank you, Ms. Citron. So the West Village project, as you know, and as all are aware, is not yet approved. It is pending. This commission will be considering at a future date. The applicant has an application in the table that has been analyzed under SEQA. The EIR is out for public comment, or I'm sorry, as public comment period is closed. Staff is reviewing those public comments. That, that project is set and is under review. If the applicant were to revise the project description to take advantage of this new state law, which they have the right to do, it is state law, they could do so. If they did that, then that would trigger a new round of analysis under SEQA. We would have to analyze the, the additional density that would be proposed if and only if the applicant chose to expand their current, current project under the new law, then it would be analyzed again. There would be another SEQA EIR amendment process, and we would go through that process at this time. To our knowledge, the applicant has chosen not to do so and is, has left the existing project on the table, which is coming to this commission at some point. So short answer, they have the right to do so, but they have not exercised that right. And we will process that project through this commission when it comes forward, at which time, if they were to make that modification, the public would be made aware through a, through another round of EIR comments. And I'll invite commissioners to say nothing as this project is not on your agenda tonight and will be coming to you soon. Thank you.
Tom, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I, I was going to say what he just finished up with, first of all, but he beat me to it. And we don't want to talk about that particular project because it is one that is pending and will be for this commission. So I'd like to clarify another thing that was brought up by the speaker, speaking about a hypothetical project, which would be, suppose you had a project that was before you. It did include a density bonus based on previous law. And either because that was withdrawn or based on a denial of the project, it would no longer carry on. If that was on a, whatever, a vacant lot or one where they're adding to existing, well, now, starting over, they would have available to them greater density bonus opportunities, if you will, for more density, fewer parking spaces, for example, et cetera, as compared with what was applied to whatever was under review before. Okay, so something that would be denied would be denied with an understanding that whatever might come later has the ordinances as now will be written and certainly under, I mean, it doesn't matter. It's already under state law available to them.
Right. Thank you, and thank you for your questions, Ms. Citron. Michael, is there anyone else with a hand up?
There is no one else with their hand up. If you want to give it another ten seconds to give everyone a shot. I'm still seeing no one with their hand up.
All right, there being no one else, I, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there, there any comments from any commissioners or do we have a motion? Dennis?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we adopt or recommend to the council that we adopt resolution in the packet. I don't look at the numbers.
Resolution two, oh, two, one, dash, seven, oh, seven.
That's it.
Is there?
I'll second.
Michael, I, do we have any discussion?
I would just add that I think that at this moment in this time, we are almost behaving ministerially here, which is to acknowledge the state law and its effect on all of the jurisdictions in California. And in the abundance of preparedness that we usually go through, we're keeping up with the game, if not getting ahead of the game at this point. So we know what we need to accomplish in the future when it comes to dealing with density bonuses and, you know, trying to promote affordable housing.
Thank you. Yes, we are, we are complying with what is being required by the state at this point. So, John, you.
Yes, this, this is just a nitpick. And, and maybe it's already been fixed on the resolution. At the very bottom of page one of the resolution, it refers to Governor Brown, and I think that's Governor Newsom.
Well, maybe, maybe I was preemptive about this whole recall business. Uh, that was just an error on my part. I apologize. And I meant to fix it, although I, we couldn't have gotten the new hard copy out to you at this COVID time. So I did send an email saying I will fix that before it gets signed.
Okay.
The only one on record is making that clear.
I believe you. I didn't see that email, but that's fine.
And I'll acknowledge that in the motion that I made.
All right, so the motion to approve the resolution as revised, we have motion, we have a second. No further discussion. I, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right, then we will send this on to council with our recommendation. Adopt the draft ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I, I I believe that's, that is what we have on our agenda, and we are on to the director's report.
Thank you very much and to our new chair, Fessberg. Congratulations to our vice chair, Michael Harrison. Congratulations to all of you for being commissioners. Thank you. And thank you especially for following along to all of the changes that the state makes on what it seems to be a quarterly basis to laws that affect our city. I'm trying to track down all of the SBS, the ABs, the government code. All of these changes has been exhausting. But we're hopeful that as these come through piecemeal to the changes that we're making at the code that it will assist all of you with just keeping up to date as we are trying to keep up to date as well with the numerous incentives and ideas that come to you as law from the state legislature to try to create affordable housing within communities like ours. Um, that'll bring me to your next set of tasks. You will have a meeting on March fourth. That will be your next meeting. You have three items on your next meeting. And the first is quite fun. We will be asking you to nominate one of you as the Arts in Public Places representative from the Planning Commission. Arts in Public Places is a, a very small board that has three representatives, representatives selected by the city council, a representative selected by the recreation and parks, the pre commission as well as you. There is no criteria except that you need to like art and be willing to participate in meetings to review art contributions as required by code primarily on larger projects. So it's a fun job. They don't meet often, so don't think that all of your time will be taken up deciding on artwork. But, but it is a, another way to contribute. And alternate commissioners are also open to actually be nominated for this position. So Commissioner Milstein, you could serve, if you wish, on the Arts in Public Places as an Arts in Public Places representative for the planning commission. So that'll be the first item on your agenda, March fourth. The second one will be the third discussion on story polls that will be happening as commission. We hope to be able to finalize the points from the last meeting, bringing back the research that you requested so that at your fifth meeting, you would actually be reviewing the policy and language such that we could move forward to the council for a final adoption, which would be meeting number six on this subject. Then finally, we have just an open discussion for you on a proposed lakeside overlay zone. And this is to address the unique configuration of homes around the lake that are zero line, in some cases, shared wall conditions. As you know, the question of setback came for, or the question of volume of height, all of these factors. Um, and what we wanted to is actually change our code through an overlay process to reflect that single family homes in this neighborhood, even though their zones are S are actually distinctly, distinctly different than other RS homes, residential, single family homes around Calabasas. So it'll be a fun discussion. And Commissioner Leah, you will go back to the last project you reviewed as a chair at the commissioner for the former Dinwiddie's house on Park near assault. So you will have a good memory, I think, of the challenges not building a house in those locations without multiple variants being applied.
Do you know the date of that meeting so I could go back and review it?
We, we could send that meeting around, but I think you'll be able to follow along to the general principles of, of what we're looking at, this necessity. When you only have a lot thirty feet, forty feet wide, it's really hard to have ten foot setbacks on either side of your lot and have a long skinny house. So this, this discussion should help us. We're looking for your ideas on how to proceed. And it'll be for our alternate commissioner, one that we look forward to your participation on. Because all good ideas are welcome, all points of view are welcome on issues related to this very unique, single family residential community. You will, we have two items tentatively scheduled for the planning commission meeting of March eighteenth. There are two house projects. But at this particular time, we cannot tell you whether or not we have we will be able to finalize those applications and move forward to them. But please do still open the date of March eighteenth for a planning commission hearing. We have nothing currently scheduled for April first, which brings us to the meeting of April fifteenth. April fifteenth, as we have finally decided is firm meeting for the first of two meetings on the West Village project. I thank all of the commissioners and staff and consultants and project team for their patience as we move forward to set this date. So West Village, your first meeting is April fifteenth, a Thursday. The second meeting established for West Village will be the following Wednesday, April twenty-first. So those are hard dates to hold for the Mr. Suara and other members of the public. We thank you for your patience as we gather together all of the materials and started to move forward to establish a firm date. And we can now announce that to the public and we'll be updating all of the messaging on our city website as well as some of the good ideas they brought forward for manners and other notifications to the community. I want to note one additional date. It's very hard to get our city council because of how busy they are to dedicate a date and a hearing date to a full item. They're doing so for West Village. That date will be May twelfth. May twelfth will be the meeting of the city council dedicated to West Village. We may have a couple of small consent items on that calendar, but the intent of the council is to consider the recommendation from this commission for the West Village project. So those are my key dates for the planning commission as we move ahead. And if anyone has any particular questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I would just add that by the time we get to the April and May meetings, Ken and Meek, our new city manager, will be in place, starting, I believe, on March sixteenth. So that'll bring us a little grounding and, you know, some additional person power and be able to deal with a lot of the issues we're facing. to be able to deal with a lot of the issues we're facing.
And thank you for that mention. Commissioner Washburn, that is one of the things that we were looking at as we set the date for this particular hearing. It's, it's offered to have a new city manager walk in the door and have a hearing of this significance without an opportunity to brief that individual. So that was one of the considerations that we took in consideration of time for the community to read the material that we will be releasing shortly that of the commission. I know that Commissioner Leah and Commissioner Milstein will be getting you documents related to the past set of three hearings that occurred on this project. And we will also be providing you and any other commissioner who wishes an opportunity for a site visit as we did during the first set of hearing. So be prepared for notes that will come through from the senior planner on that project, Clint Mickich, as he moves forward to arrange for those hearing dates. So I thank you for your patience, but also announce that we're finally here to bring forward that item.
Okay. Thank you, Marie. Do we have any reports, any final words from any commissioners? Dennis?
I don't want to be preemptive here. John, did you have your hand raised?
No, no, no.
I would like us to pay attention as commissioners to several things in the near future. You may not know, but I do serve the Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments on the MTA, Public Transportation Service Council. We meet monthly to deal with issues of transit and subways and, you know, the big dog, meaning freeways and mobility on our highways that are connected to that. The next gen so-called study that they are doing and the, the budget of the MTA are big deals now because obviously COVID-19 has decimated the public transportation system in a lot of ways and thrown even freeway construction and subway construction into a tailspin. So I would suggest that it would be worth our while to seek information about those two projects in particular from the community relations person. Invite them, you know, I think that's Karen Swift, invite her to come and describe what's going on at MTA. Second is that the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, and I've been serving on that body for a long time, just today, this morning, indicated that the National Estuary Program that has been operating that, that commission essentially with up to $600 million, $600,000 a year has increased the amount of money. And all of our watersheds essentially are the business of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. It'd be good to have somebody from them come and talk to us about impacts on particularly the Los Virginas Malibu Canyon and watersheds area there. But it also extends to the Arroyo Calabasas watershed, which essentially is about 40 square miles from all of us on the east side of the city where our drainage goes to Canoga Park High School and goes to Long Beach from that point where Bell Canyon Creek and Las, I mean, Arroyo Calabasas are seen by Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County as the origin of the LA River, like it magically springs from the ground in Canoga Park High School. The other, the last thing is that the Los Virginas Miss Water District is conducting a significant advertising and communications campaign about the water full circle or pure water project. There is a demonstration and pilot project at the headquarters that I would suggest that all the planning commissioners make a point to visit in the next several months because that's going to affect everything from housing to mobility to employment and and even the schools operating because our, our water resources are critical clearly. So I would suggest that we work these folks into our schedule as we're dealing with not just the housing element, but our long, longer term general plan process. Thank you.
Well, I, you know, I think we'll, we will leave it to you, Dennis, to, to communicate with staff and determine whether either or both of those organizations, whether it's appropriate, beneficial to have them come and speak to the commission. So I will leave it to you to, to have that discussion with staff and that determination can be made. All right?
Thanks for the recommendation.
There being nothing further, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I need a motion? I, we are adjourned to the next regular meeting of March 4th. Stay well, stay safe, everyone, and we'll see you then.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Stay well.
You too.